As Mayor, I call this Electronic Communications Meeting of Stanton City Council for May 7th, 2020 to order. I note that this meeting is being convened with city council members using the Zoom platform, broadcaster of the city's cable channel, and streamed live on the city's website so that members of the public may hear our meeting. The meeting is also being recorded. I ask now the clerk of council to call the roll for confirmation of those council members present for today's meeting. Ms. Simmons?
Mayor Dahl?
Here.
Vice Mayor Keir?
Here.
Ms. Oaks?
Here.
Mr. Holmes?
Here.
Dr. Harrington?
Here.
Ms. Mead?
Here.
Dr. Curran?
Here.
I have confirmed that all council members are present.
Thank you. I ask that City Manager Steve Rosenberg now identify his location and those city officials or colleagues, if any, present with him at that location, and the participation of anyone else during today's meeting by Zoom or telephone. Mr. Rosenberg?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am participating from my residence in Stanton. There is no one with me at this location. Also participating on the Zoom platform are Faith Simmons, Clerk of Council, Leslie Beauregard, Assistant City Manager, Doug Bwin, City Attorney, Phil Trayer, Chief Finance Officer, and John Ben, Chief Human Resources Officer.
Thank you. Please let me mention that in calling this meeting notice, reasonable under the circumstances of this meeting, has been given to the public contemporaneously with the notice by memorandum provided to members of city council. This meeting has also been publicized over the course of the past week on the city's website and Facebook page. Access to this meeting has been provided to the public by audio feed on the city's cable channel and the city's website. During this budget work session, as in the past, there will be no opportunity for public comment. Also, let me highlight and have reflected in the meeting minutes that this meeting is being conducted by Zoom, given the catastrophic nature of the declared emergency and disaster related to the COVID-19 outbreak, which as part of the total circumstances makes it impracticable or unsafe to assemble a quorum in a single location. The meeting is being held consistent with City Council Ordinance 2020-04 regarding continuity of government, a copy of which can be found online at www.stanton.v.a.us/cogord2020-04. Given that we are conducting this meeting by Zoom, with the meeting being livestreamed on the city's website and broadcast over the cable system as it occurs, I believe it merits reminder of a few special requests as we undertake this meeting in this unique format. First, I emphasize the request that each speaker speak loudly and slowly and self-identify each and every time when speaking, so that it will be clear who is speaking before your remarks are made. Second, please pause after each speaker to allow a brief interval between that speaker and another speaker. Third, if for any reason a participant cannot clearly hear the speaker or must leave the meeting before it is adjourned, please let us know. Fourth, all votes will be taken by roll call and recorded in the minutes. Fifth, I ask that if any member of city council has to leave the meeting for any period of time, to please interject and make an announcement so that the clerk may take note of attendance in the minutes. I ask that you also announce your return, so it also may be reflected in the meeting minutes. Finally, I ask everyone's patience, because without being in the same room, it is likely that a speaker may not realize that another speaker is continuing. Again, we may unintentionally step on each other's words, so it's fine if we need to have the speaker repeat or clarify. We'll take whatever time is necessary so that everyone is clear about what is being said and by whom. I will now take questions from council members and participants if you have any questions about this process. Council members, does anyone have any questions about the process? We're probably getting used to it now. Well, with no questions, I'll turn this over to Mr. Rosenberg.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Give me just one moment here, if you would. Okay. So first, as with the work sessions, let me note for the public that the materials to be discussed this evening have been posted on the city's website at www.c i.stanton.v.a.us/budget. I share with all of you that revisions to the schools portion of the FY 2021 budget have been completed. Mr. Trayer will share those with you shortly. Since last week's budget work session on April 30th, we received three questions from council members. One concerning the proposed increases in the water user fees and the refuse and recycling rates, a second about the golf course, and a third about the part-time employees who were terminated earlier this year. Mr. Trayer will address the fee and rate increases as a part of his presentation. I emailed council members this morning concerning the status of the golf course and the resumption of its operations, and this afternoon concerning plans to rehire the part-time employees. Subsequent to Mr. Trayer's presentation, we would be pleased to discuss these subjects if there are continuing questions and to entertain additional questions concerning the budget in its entirety. Based on the guidance that we received from you this evening, after Mr. Trayer's presentation, we will make further and final adjustments to the budget before Thursday, May 14th, the date on which the budget is scheduled for your consideration. And with that introduction, I'll invite Mr. Trayer to share his presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenberg. Madam Mayor, members of councils, it's a pleasure to be here this evening. Tonight, we are here for a final review of our FY 2021 budget. As can be seen in Slide 2, our FY 21 revised budget totals $114,290,000 as compared to FY '20's adopted budget of $119,916,000 for a negative variance of $5.6 million. Our city numbers, as Mr. Rosenberg had mentioned, has not changed. However, we do have school numbers to report at this time. FY '21's revised school budget equals $37,202 versus FY '20's budget of $38,307 for a negative variance of $1.1 million. On the next slide, we'll look closer at the education fund revenues. That's Fund 900. Overall, revenues in this fund are projected to be $32,471,000 versus FY '21's original proposal of $34,579,000 and FY '20's adopted budget of $33.6 million. This provides a variance of $2.1 and $1.2 million respectively. State revenues have been reduced by $752,000, like the city. The primary reason for this reduction versus FY '20 is the projected sales tax allocation decline directly from the state. The local transfer is down $1.8 million compared to FY '20's budget for established budgeting formula or $1.9 million versus their original proposed budget. Federal funds, we have a positive variance of $793,000, primarily due to $703,000 awarded via the stimulus package. The remainder of the funds are due to title increases. General funds, we have a positive revenue of $691,000, and this is driven by the use of fund balance by the schools of $750,000. On the next slide, we'll look at other funds. State-operated programs are increasing $151,000 due to projected caseload increases. The cafeteria fund, we do have a modest increase, but I will say, year on year, the cafeteria fund is doing tremendous work in reaching out to disadvantaged children throughout the community. It's something that we should be of a real pride to the city of Stanton for all the equity issues and the results that the schools are getting. Moving on to textbook fund, that's declined $22,000 per state funding template and CIP decrease of $100,000 due to the deferral of CIP reserve funding. The next slide. I had to put this slide in. There is no real estate tax increase incorporated into this revised budget. It remains at 95 cents for $100 of assessed value. On the next slide, we will begin a review of the proposed FY 2021 water fee increase of 5%. The increase is designed to enable the city to build a rate structure that will allow for the funding of future CIP projects as well as localized piping issue. We anticipate an increase in customer receipts of $156,000. The average home bill will increase $15.12 on an annual basis, $1.26 per month or 4 cents per day. As a reminder, our FY 2024 water CIP outlines a total of $15.7 million of scheduled projects which are deemed critical for the city of Stanton. Slide 7 provides a summary of these projects. As can be seen on Slide 7. Here we have Gardner Springs Construction is scheduled for FY '22 with design fees leading up to the construction. The North River Phase 1 project is scheduled for FY '24 with design fees leading up to that construction. In addition, we have $800,000 for line repairs, as well as Franklin Hill Water Tank Surface Treatment of $80,000 and $25,000 for the Union Town Study. On the next slide, as we mentioned above, we have two major projects in the 2024 Water CIP plan. The Gardner Springs project, scheduled for FY '22, will move the current pump station above the 100-year flood elevation and replace pump equipment, which has been operational for nearly 70 years. This $6.9 million project will carry an estimated debt service of $585,000. The timing of this project is such that we can absorb the debt service because we have other bonds due to Spire and FY '21. Those bonds carry a debt service of $476,000. Next slide. The North River Pipeline Project, scheduled for FY '24, is a $6.5 million project will carry an estimated debt service of $562,000. It is this project right now that we're currently building our rate structure for. The total North River Pipeline Replacement Project is expected to exceed $25 million and will have to be done in phases. The pipeline is made of cast iron. It's 16 miles long, has a life expectancy of 100 years, and we're 95% of the way through that life expectancy. Unscheduled projects in the water fund total $30 million, which includes $18.5 million for the balance of the North River Pipeline Project. Our plan is to address the most inaccessible portion of the pipeline first, and that's the portion that goes underneath North Mountain. Next slide. As a background for the rate increase, our council's previous directives were that utility rate increases were to be applied in a modest, more consistent manner as opposed to periodic dramatic increases. It is with this in mind that we have proposed this rate increase. We do have to report, though, that FY '21 rate increases could be deferred by a year without significant impact on the upcoming fiscal year. However, rate increases must take place relatively soon in order to address the critical infrastructure, especially the North River Pipeline, which carries 50% of our water. Without a rate increase, subsequent rate increases will be impacted beginning as soon as FY '22 if the city is to be in a position to address the North River Pipeline Project. Subsequent year increases may look like 7.5% in FY '22 and 7.5% in FY '23. Moving on to refuse. During the FY 2020 budget process, the CFO at the time, Gene Colvin, provided a rate structure plan to enable the city to continue its recycling efforts as well as to prepare for future CIP requirements at the Augusta Regional Landfill. As can be seen from the slide, the rate structure was to increase by 15% in FY '20, which it did, 10% in FY '21, and that's proposed, 15% in FY '22, 10% in FY '23, and 0% in FY '24. Next slide. The cost drivers for this increase is a recycling program and the scheduled landfill Phase 5 development, which is scheduled to begin in FY '22 with the design of the project and actual construction of $3.5 million to occur in FY '24. Stanton's share of this project will be $780,000. The landfill also has significant costs associated with heavy equipment replacement cycles, compacters, dozers, haul trucks, and loaders, just to name a few. On our next slide, there are some additional projects at the Augusta Regional Landfill, and they include the construction of a pole barn for $100,000. This item brings the landfill within compliance of the conditions set forth in their permit, which requires maintenance of landfill equipment to occur undercover. The relocation of the scale house is $675,000. Currently, the scale house has one-lane entry and exit, and traffic backups are becoming a safety issue with private vehicles backed up and intermixing with heavy commercial trucks. The construction of the new office, $775,000. The current office is a trailer. It's 25 years old. It will be 28 years by the time it is replaced. It is tired, it is worn down, it's not in good shape. Slide 15 provides a summary of the Augusta Regional Landfill CIP. As you can see, the city's cash outflow obligation at the bottom of the slide after our contribution of 20.52% has been applied. The high water mark on this, if you will, is FY '23, where we're looking at nearly a million dollars worth of contributions in that year alone. The city's equipment requirements are also playing a role, as the city needs to replace numerous pieces of heavy equipment. FY '21's budget includes the replacement of an 11-year-old recycling truck for $160,000 and the replacement of a 13-year-old refuse truck for $170,000. Slide 17. Just like the water, the FY 2021 rate increase could be forestalled by one year without significant impact on the upcoming fiscal year. To compensate this, we will delay the recycling truck replacement, and rates in subsequent years will be impacted to compensate for deferred expenses. Without our increase, FY '22 rates already projected to be at 15% will be projected to be at 20%. FY '23 rates already projected to be at 10% will be at 15%. And that includes the refuse forces. Next slide, sort of ending where we began. At the present time, our total FY 2021 budget equals $114,290,000. We will be asking next week for council to approve the entire FY 2021 budget at that time. Our appropriation request, however, will be 60% of the approved budget or $68,574. This is the actual amount that we will be able to spend until we come back before council to ask for additional appropriation against our approved budget. A 60% appropriation will allow for contractual obligations, which are often paid in full at the beginning of the year while allowing other line items to remain funded for the first six months of the fiscal year. Our plan is to come back before council in the fall to ask for additional appropriations. At that time, we hope to have a better handle of the true economic impact the pandemic is having on the city's budget, and our appropriation will be adjusted upwards or downwards depending on how we're bearing. With that, I will do the best I can to answer your questions.
So let's go down through the list of council members and see who has questions at this point. Vice Mayor Keir?
Yes, so, Mr. Trayer?
Yes, sir.
The landfill project in itself, I think we're looking at $22 per year increase per citizen, or is that average? And the same question for the water fee?
That would be per household on an annual basis.
Average of four people? Out of our house? I'm sorry, was that average, a household of four?
I believe it was an average household. I can't report exactly how many people would be in those households, but I can find out.
And the pole barn and scale, we're looking at doing that, I think you said, or starting in three years to alleviate the traffic flow into the facility?
Yeah, the pole barn is more of a maintenance-type item. They have been traditionally repairing heavy equipment on sites much where it breaks down. That's against environmental regulations at this time, and they have to have it in a more defined structure undercover. This is not an elaborate structure, but it will be enough to meet the code requirements so they can continue doing that. And then the scale, you're absolutely right, we do have safety concerns with traffic backup. We have people skirting around and almost causing accidents as they get impatient and try to move through the line. The backup's also backing up onto the road, which already has site problems, and that's creating safety issues on the road leading in to the landfill because of the location and the setup of the scale house itself.
And one more, if we delay this, we're looking at the next two years increasing each year by 5%, correct?
Yes, sir. That would be the initial plan.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, Dr. Harrington?
Yeah, just to do a little arithmetic, those increases that are proposed for water and refuse, it's about $22 plus $15, around $36, $37 a year?
Roughly.
Is that right?
Yes, sir.
So a little bit more than, a little bit more than $3 a month increase is what this would entail.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Ms. Oaks?
Yes, so the fee increases, if we were to delay them a year, I thought it would be 7.5% for the next two years.
That would be for the water, yes, ma'am. That would be for the, yes, ma'am.
Okay, the water would be 7.5% for the next two years, and the recycling or environmental fee, that would be 15%?
We would be put, okay, right now, for FY '22, it would be 15%. We would be moving that up to 20%. FY '23, it's at 10%, and we would be moving that to 15%. Our initial recommendation, which would be subject to council approval.
Okay, as far as the Gardner Springs, you said that the start date on that, you're looking at FY 2020?
22, ma'am. Sorry if I misspoke.
FY '22. All right, and discuss what all will take place with the Gardner Springs.
Okay, now, I don't have all of the intimate details of the project, but I do know that currently it resides in the 100-year floodplain, and we will be moving it up above that floodplain. And the pumps themselves have been operational nearly 70 years. These are past their life expectancy, as I understand it, and it's something that needs to be addressed sooner rather than later.
Okay, so that's what is entailed with the Gardner Springs?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right. And $1.26 per month per household for the water fee?
Yes, ma'am.
That would be the, what was it? For the environmental fee, what was that per month again?
Let me pull that up right here. We would be looking at, just a minute.
I think it was $1.90.
Yeah, yeah, no, it was, it was, it was. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, and the total amount, let's see. $156,725 for the water fee is what we're looking at taking in?
Yes.
And $204,000 for the environmental fee?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You bet.
All right, Ms. Mead?
Mr. Traylor, that's the incremental increase or that's the total amount?
Those would be the incremental increases. Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have.
All right, Dr. Curran?
I assume that the Public Works Department has used its best thought process and creativity to try to find any ways to cut and make things more efficient so that we wouldn't have to raise these fees so much, but we could still cover this work.
Well, yes, they have. The water, I think, really has to do with the infrastructure itself, and we have exhausted the life expectancy of our current, we're about to exhaust the life expectancy, they're still operational. And as far as the recycling, you know, so I know that there has at times been suggestions maybe modifying the pickup schedule, you know, but I can tell you right now, it is all that they can do to keep up with the current cycle, to pick up all of the recycling. Stanton recycles heavily, and it is quite an effort to bring that in on the current schedule. Reducing that, I'm not sure how well that would work with being able to pick up the loads that we have. I mean, truly is, you know, so I was speaking with the facilities director this morning on that issue, and he assured me that they have looked and they are looking at reroutes and things of that nature, but a reduction in the pickup might be a little more than their department could handle when it is time to pick up. There is a tremendous amount of recycling going on.
Thank you.
Mr. Rosenberg?
Madam Mayor, if I could just briefly address Dr. Curran's question, you know, both of these projects, I think that, if I recall correctly, have not been fully designed, so there is certainly an opportunity yet to realize some cost savings, I would imagine, but we need to establish a rate structure on the basis of the best estimates that we presently have. So that's what brings us to the proposal that you have before you, but I would not eliminate the possibility that there may be further savings that are realized as the projects progress. Thanks.
So, Dr. Curran, do you have any other questions at this time?
No, no, ma'am.
I would like to add that when Mr. Trayer said that Stanton has heavy recycling, that's not a bad thing. It's a good thing that our citizens are doing as much recycling as they're doing, and we appreciate it and hope we can continue to do that. My only thoughts on these two fee increases are that I feel a real responsibility that we don't let our infrastructure deteriorate. We could have a catastrophe between Gardner Springs, if that wasn't fixed, and our other pipeline that we're going to be working on. If we don't get that done, we'll end up with a huge problem. So I think it's just proactive, and it's good planning on staff's part to have this scheduled out so that we can meet our debt service requirements by having the fees available. So that's my two cents on the two fees. Is there any other comments or questions? Is there any other comments or questions from any council members on the fee increases specifically? Mr. Holmes?
Well, I've got a question.
Mr. Holmes?
How much, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Okay, I was just wondering how much we've spent on... I'm sorry, I must have a little lapse here. Okay, I was just curious, how much have we already spent on water breaks like this year? Seems like we've had three or four pretty good ones in the last few months.
Yeah, we have, and I don't have that figure off the top of my head. I can't look that up for you. I do know that we have $400,000 budgeted for that line items, and we expect to go through the full $400,000.
Vice Mayor, Carr had a question, I think, or comment.
Well, I was going to, yes, I was going to go down, and nobody wants to go down. So for either Steve or Phil, what would happen if we had a major break from the pipeline through North River? How, are there any calculations as to the financial loss or the loss of capacity for what kind of period of time? And I'm sorry to throw that out there, but you probably have already figured or worked on that.
I think a lot has to do with where the break occurs. There's 15 miles of it above the mountain, or not underneath the mountain, it's one mile underneath the mountain. And so if it was above the mountain, I think it'd be much easier repair. If it was below the mountain, it'd be more difficult repair, and probably take a little bit longer. We're receiving up to 50% of our water, so that would be a significant problem to handle.
Loss. Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments on the fee? Is that Dr. Curran?
Yeah.
Dr. Curran?
Eric, yeah. Thank you. So I guess since we're able to make comments now, I understand this sounds like it would be very prudent to start building this fee structure and planning on this work in a normal time. But this is not a normal time. I think it's the wrong time to raise fees. I know it's not the same as raising taxes. I hope that our citizens can understand that our fees pay for a service, and they also pay to keep the equipment maintained so we can keep providing that service. It's just like Dominion selling electricity or Comcast selling internet. It's a fee, you get the service. You get the service, you pay the fee. It's not a tax. However, I still think it's not the right time to be raising fees. So I don't think I can support raising these fees at this point.
All right, thank you. Any other comments on this?
I have a comment.
Dr. Harrington?
Yeah, I think a little bit of a different view of it from the one... Am I on? Who's on?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Harrington first.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Okay, what I said is that I take a somewhat different view of it from the one that Eric just described. It seems to me that, one of the things that I think public bodies contemplate at their peril is deferring maintenance. Because deferred maintenance seems to me, at least in my experience in higher education, almost always ends up costing you more. And it also, it also risks, it runs the risk of some sort of catastrophic failure of equipment. I don't know, I'm not predicting that. I don't know that that would happen. I do know that that line that comes to us and it brings us water 16 miles through the mountain, one mile through the mountain and 15 other miles, is 100 years old. And I think we've all read the story of how our predecessors, in what I view as an act of civic courage, made the investment to put that in. And we have maintained it and taken care of it admirably, I think, since then. I think that it is, would be in our benefit and would be an expression of our prudence and wisdom if we went ahead and made the start this year, this coming tax year, to make those repairs. I think if we don't do it, it's going to cost us more later. I think the amount of increase, and I recognize that any increase is an imposition, especially in tough times, but that amount is, as I mentioned a little bit earlier, a little bit more than $3 a month per household. I think that's a pretty good investment in keeping that water flowing. And so I would favor doing that project and funding that project.
All right, thank you. Ms. May, you had your hand raised?
Yes, I also wanted to express support for these fee increases this year, more modest this year. I think if we wait until next year, and we're talking about 20% increases and 15% increases and 20% increases the year after that, that's what people will hear. That will seem like an enormous amount of an increase at that time. And I also think that there's no, and I'm quite certain that there's no guarantee that when it comes time to do the fiscal year '22 budget, that there will be a memory of what we decided and why we decided to do it. And so I do think we need to begin this process now of taking care of our infrastructure and making sure... I mean, you know, if my house needed a roof, I could wait for a year and suffer damage to the interior of my home. And I think this is very much like that, and it may be an inconvenient time, is well, an inconvenient time, but it is still necessary, and I think that's our fault.
All right, thank you. Anyone else have any?
Well, since we're already discussing which way we're leaning on this, $3.16 a month may not seem like a lot, but when you have people out there that are losing their jobs, that is a lot. I mean, we have citizens that are digging in their couchs trying to find change in order to provide a meal to their family. So this is very, very concerning. Now, do these projects need to be done? Absolutely. However, we can be able to put this off a year, as explained. The percentages, as far as the fees are concerned, have been presented, and that is a recommendation. That can certainly be revisited as well. But what we do know right now is the fact that we have citizens that have lost their jobs, and we know that we are in dire straits right now. Being able to plan down the road for the following year will be key. And again, we can review the percentages next year. I believe that we need to go ahead and hold here. And I'm glad to see that Dr. Curran is in agreement with me on the idea of holding off. These projects do need to be done, and we will need to keep an eye on it. However, what we know right now, we know that our citizens are suffering. Hopefully, a water line will not break, and if so, we will handle that. However, at this time, what we do know is that our citizens are struggling. So I cannot support a fee increase at this time.
I had a question. If these increases are approved, like for the water, you wouldn't actually get that increase until the September bill? Am I right on that?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And my other question is a rhetorical question. Who can guarantee that everyone will have their job a year from now?
Well, there's no guarantee of that. However, what we do know, there is a guarantee that they do not have them today. So right now, we have a crisis, and hopefully that crisis will be mitigated. I know it's not going to be completely resolved, but at least it'll be mitigated somewhat. And now we know what we're facing. Right now, with this pandemic, this came upon us. It was unexpected. And people did not have time to plan. I just, in good conscience, I can't do it.
All right, thank you. My opinion is, I don't want to delay these fees because if either one of those, either Gardner Springs or the pipe breaks, and we have a catastrophe, it's on us. It is our responsibility. I believe the buck does stop with us on that. And I don't think we can afford to take that chance. As old as the Gardner Springs pumps are and as old as that pipe is, I think it's risky to do that. Now, I saw some hands. Who had their hands up again? Somebody else wants to speak? Ms. May?
This is Brenda. I would... Could I just ask one question? Does anyone have any figures on what, how many Stanton citizens have filed for unemployment since this crisis began? I'd like to get an idea.
Well, at least 64 part-time employees, I'm sure, are looking into it that we laid off as a city.
They don't all live in the city, though.
Well, we still laid them off.
Our employees live in...
Well, then why did we wait?
Ms. Oaks, I wonder if I could...
Can we make sure we're speaking one at a time? I will say that I know Billy Vaughn gets those figures because that's, the unemployment is reported monthly. So we can get those figures, but not tonight, probably, on unemployment. I see Mr. Holmes has his hand up.
Mr. Rosenberg had his up first, but if you want to ask him first.
Okay, I can, all right. Mr. Rosenberg.
Madam Mayor, I just wanted to note for council members and for the public that there seems to be some degradation of the Zoom platform so that it's difficult to keep up in real time with who is speaking and who is seeking recognition from the mayor. So I would encourage council members with the mayor's concurrence to, as I have done, to raise your hand when you wish to be recognized, because I think that there's a delay that is making it difficult and challenging for everyone to engage simultaneously the way we have become accustomed to doing using the Zoom platform. So just a suggestion to you all as we continue to navigate through the meeting.
Thank you. So did everyone, now we're at Mr. Holmes.
Madam Mayor, it's Terry Holmes. I'm for the increase because, for one thing, I don't think we know exactly how our income is going to be from meals tax, boarding tax, stuff like that. We don't even know how that's going to be affected over the year. And these projects are, you know, I don't want to kick the can down the road, you know? I mean, we need to be working on some of these things. We've had a lot of water breaks here lately, you know? And, you know, it's a lot of things that could cost us money. And I think that this is, right now, I mean, we, down the road, it's going to be 15%. And then, you know, if people are in the same condition that they are now, we can't, we won't be able to kick it down the road again. $3 sounds a lot better to me than $5 or $6 in a year from now.
All right, thank you. So at this time, Mr. Rosenberg, I'll ask you, did you want to go back to any of those three questions that council members had sent? I can go around, I can go down the list and see if anybody has any questions about those items? If that's helpful.
We, of course, covered the... We covered the question, the questions about the increases in the fees. I'm happy to talk about the golf course or about the status of the part-time employees if council members would like to have any of those issues addressed during this work session.
Okay, if council members are interested in hearing any more about those other two items, if you could, like, raise your hands, if you have any interest in hearing a recap or information on those. I think you must have answered everybody's questions on those items. I don't see any hands up unless I'm missing something.
I have mine up.
I got mine up, Madam Mayor.
Okay, now you got, that's the delay happening, I guess. All right. So, Ms. Oaks, what specifically did you want to hear about?
Okay, as far as the golf course is concerned, do you know approximately how much we're losing in revenue since we've had it closed?
I did not come in with that particular item. I can look that up and get that to you very quickly. I apologize, Ms. Oaks.
No, that's no problem. It concerns me that we have... I'm sorry, go ahead.
I do wish to be very clear that the decisions about the golf course were not based on fiscal considerations. They were based solely on public health considerations. And we initially made the decision to maintain the operations, of course, after the local emergency was first declared. And then eventually, we progressed to a one-person-per-cart pool to facilitate the required social distancing. And then after another period of time, we ultimately made a decision to close the course for three reasons. One, a desire to encourage local conduct was consistent with the governor's stay-at-home order. Two, concerns about the safety of city employees at the course because we didn't have a system to conduct contactless transactions. And then third, it became challenging to keep up with the cleaning of the carts between their uses because of the limited staff at the course and the higher rate of turnover given the one-person-per-cart rule. So I'm well aware that the governor's other executive order that addressed recreational activities did not require closure of a golf course. But in our circumstances, we made the decision incrementally to do that. incrementally to do that. And I want you all... I want you all to know, and I want the public to be aware, that that was the sole consideration for our decision to close the course. And after that decision was made, we kept the part-time employees at the golf course on the payroll for, I believe, five weeks, until it became apparent to us that there was no immediate end in sight to the public health emergency. And at that point, they were terminated, along with the other 60 part-time employees. We are now looking at plans to reopen the course in conjunction with our planning effort that will address the closure of all city facilities and the suspension of programs and services. And in the same way that that was incrementally undertaken, we will reverse those decisions on the basis of guidance, considering guidance that we received from state. And we expect to get more detailed guidance from the state tomorrow.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Rosenberg. And now Mr. Holmes has his hand up.
Yeah, I got... We don't have anybody working there right now. Even the golf pro is not on premise, is he?
The golf pro is continuing to work, and he has coordinated with the Director of Parks and Recreation to ensure that he has tasks to perform as a part of the upkeep and maintenance of the facilities and for purposes of planning for its reopening. And so some of that, I believe, is being done on-site, and some of it is being done remotely.
What's the possibility of just letting people play for free, but not use the carts, not use any of our... Just walk the course? If you've got somebody there to tell them to, you know, to keep their distance, would that be something that might be acceptable?
Mr. Holmes, we're... As I said, we're going to look at the resumption of activity at the golf course as part of our consideration of all of the closed city facilities. And perhaps that would be an appropriate first step. But it's not something that I'm prepared to recommend tonight or to implement tomorrow.
Thank you.
All right. I was thinking that I could go down to the list of council people and see if they have any questions about anything else regarding to... That's included in the budget that we haven't... May not have addressed at this point. So I'll start with Dr. Curran.
No, I don't have any more questions. Thanks.
All right. Thanks. Ms. May?
I have no more questions.
Thank you. Ms. Oaks?
Um, yes. Actually, I have a comment. Maybe taking a look at the courses that have remained open in our surrounding areas to see what they're doing concerning not having the employees have to have any sort of contact with their patrons, just to see what they're doing for safety. Um... Now, I did have a question concerning the... Under the fire department, there was a reduction of $10,000 for equipment repair. I just wanted to ask about that. I mean, what all does that entail? I want to make sure that all the fire equipment is working properly. So, you know, safety first.
I can assure you, Ms. Oaks, that...
It was on the list that you...
That was one of the... Yes, ma'am. That was one of the reductions that Chief Garber had communicated with me, that he felt comfortable reducing.
Okay. So all apparatuses, everything's in proper running order? Every... Our citizens are safe? We have proper coverage? Everything's...
Yes, ma'am. Now...
Steve, you hired...
I will say during the process... Yes. During the process, there was a little bit of a disconnect and the, you know, between myself and the fire chief. And they promptly reached out to me, and we adjusted accordingly. So I have been in close coordination with the fire department on all reductions.
Okay. And Steve, you did end up approving hiring an additional fireman, right? Firefighter, excuse me. Steve?
Yes, he did. Trying to recall... Yeah. So, yes, there was a vacancy...
Was it an AP?
...in a full-time position that we offer. Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all.
Dr. Harrington?
No questions. Thanks.
All right. Thanks. Vice Mayor Kyre?
None that I can think of now. No. Thank you.
All right. Thanks. And I just want to say again, thanks to staff, everyone who's worked on the budget. Mr. Rosenberg, I see your hand up.
I'm just anticipating, Madam Mayor, that we're heading in the direction of winding up. And I want... I wanted to share with council and with the public that Kurt Plowman, our information technology director, confirms that Zoom is having issues with its service at the present time. And that accounts for the challenges that we've encountered this evening. It won't help us this evening, but they're working on remedying those issues. And so I think we can all hope, when we convene again in this way a week from tonight, that we'll have the same positive experience that we've had up to this point. So my, you know, my apologies for the difficulties that we've encountered. Mr. Plowman does tell me that from his end, the audio feed is functioning properly. So as we have muddled through it, hopefully, those members of the public who have been listening have not had any difficulty.
All right. Thank you. So it does look like every council member we've gone through, and no one has any additional questions. And we've gone over what Mr. Schrader had given us. So I'm sure that if there's any last-minute epiphany that comes to any of you during the night or something, that you can email that to Mr. Rosenberg, any question or whatever, so that we can make sure we've got everything in order for our meeting next week. So if there's... If there's no other... I see Mr. Rosenberg.
Just one final comment to remind you all then that your agenda package for May 14th will go out tomorrow. And it will have in it your draft budget ordinance. And it may look a little different than the form you are accustomed to because it will provide for that 60% appropriation, which is not something that has been done previously. So I invite you to look for that provision specifically. And additionally, you will see that it will address council's participation in the furlough. So that's another provision that I call to your attention. So I suggest that you perhaps focus on that document sooner rather than later. That is the budget ordinance. And if you have any questions at all about it, you're welcome to contact Ms. Belregard, me, or I'm going to volunteer the city attorney as well, if you have any new questions that you think have legal repercussions. Thank you.
All right. So I think we've got our instructions in terms of reviewing the budget ordinance. And so with no further questions, I guess I'll wait for just a moment to see if anybody has any last-minute questions or comments. And I don't hear any. So with no further... Oh, do you?
Terry.
Wait a minute.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Holmes.
I don't... I don't know if you're not seeing my feed or what. Yeah. I do want to make a statement. I'm just, you know, we're not charging parking fees. We're, you know, we're not going to raise real estate tax. You know, if we don't raise the water and the sewer and garbage pickup, you know, we're giving away a lot of things for nothing now. And if anything bad happens, we could really get ourselves in a pickle. So I know it seems like you don't want to raise money on people in this time. But also, we don't have... We don't know that what the income is going to be for the city. And these are things that people will not... I mean, all of a sudden, you don't have money to pay the police or fire department or fix a water leak. People are going to really be mad about that. And I just think that we need to take that into consideration. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else with any last-minute questions or comments? Hearing none, and with no further business, I call this meeting adjourned.